Okay, I call the regular meeting of the Board of Education of April 11th, 2024 to order. We apparently have no communication, no one here to speak to close session items, and so we'll adjourn immediately to closed session.
They came back?
Ready? Well, it's still good. I hereby reconvene the Board to the regular meeting of April 11th, 2024. And the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a student from Mission Middle School to lead us in the pledge, Sophie Espinoza.
Please see right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are, all members are present this evening except for Mr. Houston, who is under the weather tonight. So I'll ask you to bear with me because I haven't been presided as president in a long time. And it takes a little while to get used to it again, but I appreciate your patience. The next item is a report out of closed session. In closed session, the Board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee number 656661 by a vote of four to zero with one absence. In closed session, the Board considered the non-relection of a certificated probationary employee and took action to non-reelect employee number 116747 for the 2024-25 school year by a vote of four to zero and one absence. In closed session, the Board considered the non-relection of a certificated probationary employee and took action to non-reelect employee number 494151 for the 2024-25 school year by a vote of four to zero with one absence. And that's our report out of closed session. The next item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda.
Yes, staff is requesting that we pull item N1, mitigation agreement, annexation of territory with true mark homes. We'll bring that for a vote at a later date.
Is there a motion?
Move approval of agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Oh wait, we vote.
Oops. Yes.
We can switch it up.
Here we go. Got it. Okay, the next item is looking for approval of the minutes of, let's see. The...
March 7.
I know, we're not keeping track, we're not keeping up with it on the screen. An approval of the minutes of March 7th, 2024, our regular meeting?
Make a motion, approval submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? It didn't come up this time. Top right. There it is.
We voted, yeah?
Yes. Well, once it comes up, it's easy. And our favorite part of the meeting is recognitions. We have recognitions for, first of all, Mission Middle School?
Yes, we are excited to be honoring our students from across the district with our SE awards, our Student Excellence Awards. So yes, we'll invite Principal Krasco from Mission Middle.
Good evening Superintendent Dr. Avara and Cabinet members. Good evening Board President, Mr. Olson and Board Members.
Americans.
So this evening, I would like to share with you some of our highlights. Let me put my glasses because my breath is next week and I'm getting to that point where I'm losing my vision. So every Mission student is a creative problem solver, a critical thinker, and an effective communicator. At Mission Middle School, we are dedicated to fostering a rich educational environment through our unique approach known as the teaching and learning cycle. Our teachers actively engage in planning, executing projects that offer students personalized and authentic learning experiences. These projects empower students to enhance their communication abilities and become effective oral communicators. Within our programs, students look into research, engage in debates, and with self-confidence, present their findings. Such activities are crafted to stimulate critical thinking and hone essential communication skills. This year, we had the opportunity to engage in exploring project-based learning through the lens of our framework for the future. This was very exciting for us because it also helped us to finalize our redesign plan. And through that experience, we create a plan that will endure a focus that revolves around shaping students' overall learning profiles. By crafting classroom lessons to explore real-world challenges and by immersing our students in meaningful and appropriate educational experiences, we are aiming to cultivate a cohort of learners ready to tackle the complexities of the world around them. We're very excited about this journey that we're going to be taking next year, so we're inviting you to come and experience our projects that we're going to be personalizing for every student through their personal styles and also interests. So please come and join us next year for that. Now, I would like to invite our three scholars to the front. Sophia Espinoza is always giving positive energy and encouraging others around her. She is a key player in drama and also a strong web leader. Thank you and congratulations.
There you go.
And by the way, because Frank Houston's name is on the board, if you mean sign, but you'll get back to your sign.
Thank you. Christopher Desai. Christopher is a scholar that is always prepared for class. He has a great attitude and is always engaging in all his activities. Thank you, Christopher, and congratulations. Myra Speckel. Myra is a scholar who is a strong leader in her classes. She is respectful and responsible. She's a strong collaborator in all her classes. Thank you, Myra. And congratulations to our scholars.
Okay, and next up, we'd like to go ahead and invite the principal of Oak Hill Elementary, Principal Carmen Madrigal.
Good evening, Ms. Gardner and Board Members, Superintendent Ivara, Cabinet, Students and Families. My name is Carmen Madrigal and I am the proud principal of Oak Hill Elementary School. Oak Hill fosters a positive school environment for all students to strive with a focus on academic growth and social-emotional learning. Teachers are committed to developing a sense of belonging in students and providing rigorous instruction to support students in meeting grade-level standards. In partnership with our parents and community members, we are committed to the academic success and the social-emotional well-being of all students. Some of the great learning that is happening at Oak Hill exemplifies students developing as creative problem solvers. Students ask questions as they explore caterpillars and bugs. They use engineering skills to design structures with cups or other materials. They pursue solutions in mathematical problems. As effective communicators, students take turns debating different topics during ELD class as they express their opinions and listen to others or work on a theater performance where they showcase their confidence in speaking and acting skills or participate in the Otter News production crew where students are provided opportunities to interview, speak, and write as they convey information and express ideas to different audiences. As ethical scholars, we partner with community members to make a positive impact on our students and to give them an opportunity to demonstrate integrity, respect, and compassion. From Honda Care, sharing books with us, city government and school district officials, spending time with our students during Read Across America, allowing our students to take a peek into their lives, to the opportunity afforded our students to show respect to our local police or fire department when they come to visit. Thank you to everyone who has worked with our students. We appreciate your time and efforts. Tonight, while I am proud of all my students, I have the privilege this evening of presenting to you three of our amazing fifth-grade students. So if the students would like to join me tonight? From Mrs. Torres' class, Pablo Romero. Pablo is a dedicated and talented student who excels in everything he encounters. As a clarinet player in the school band, he showcases his musical talent with passion and skill. Additionally, his role as a featured anchor on the Otter News team highlights his exceptional communication abilities as well as his sense of humor. Moreover, as a dancer in a step beyond, he continues to enrich the Escondido community with his commitment to the arts. Pablo is an asset to Escondido Union School District and the entire community of Escondido. From Mrs. Austin's class, Isaac Sanchez. Isaac is an exemplary student. His enthusiasm for learning, positive attitude, and contributions to building a strong classroom community are qualities that undoubtedly make him a standout. Isaac possesses an intrinsic motivation to do well in school. He is an active participant in lessons and consistently shares thoughtful and insightful ideas in class discussions. In addition to Isaac's dedication to his education, his kindness toward peers and his collaborative nature contribute significantly to the positive learning environment within the classroom. It gives me great pleasure to honor Isaac Sanchez with this special recognition. From Mr. Speltz's class, Maria Sanchez Sanchez. Maria came to Oak Hill as a newcomer in second grade during the hybrid COVID year. Now she is working at a fifth-grade level in both reading and math. Despite being very shy, she is a leader in class that all her peers respect and admire. She is now the student that helps out the teachers or the newcomers to feel welcome and acclimated to Oak Hill. She helps to translate class instructions and any questions for other students. Maria has been a great academic and model student for the fifth graders at Oak Hill and is very deserving of this recognition. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight our school. I am honored to work with such an amazing community, staff, and members.
And next, we'd like to invite up Principal Beth Crooks from Orange Glen Elementary.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Avara and Cabinet members. I'm honored to be here this evening to present our School Excellence Awards from Orange Glen. We appreciate our staff and families at our school, and some have joined us tonight, quite a few actually. So thank you, Orange Glen Owls, for your continued support. Please stand to be recognized if you're an Orange Glen Owl or supporting one. Family members too, don't be shy.
That's a reluctant one.
It may be the most Owls I've ever had here at the board meeting. We'd also like to share a few highlights from our school. Every Orange Glen student is an ethical scholar. We pursue positive interactions to ensure a safe and welcoming campus. We routinely use restorative practices, working together to fix our mistakes and to do what is right. We also reward students for their choices with owl slips redeemable at the owl store. The Great Kindness Challenge, Safety Patrol, PTA Reflection projects are PBIS platinum status, and learning about our role in the environment all show how students at Orange Glen are ethical scholars. Every Orange Glen student is an empathetic collaborator. We come together in community circles and at our weekly assembly to listen, engage, and honor our experiences. Our older students work with our younger buddies to learn from other points of view. We also collaborate as a team in our ELAB sports programs. Working together for a common goal is how Orange Glen students are empathetic collaborators. Every Orange Glen student is an empowered learner. We're curious and can overcome challenges as we grow and learn. We set goals and celebrate when our goals are reached at trimester assemblies, AR recesses, and other events. Ringing the bell at our school is our favorite way to celebrate. We discover new strengths and interests during our ELAB programs and in our enrichment wheel. We even support our parents in learning new skills. Continuous growth is how Orange Glen students are empowered learners. Tonight, Orange Glen is proud to present three Owls to be recognized for school excellence, and I would like to invite our students to the podium with me right now. First, we present fourth grader Ja Pham. Ja is a newcomer who enrolled at Orange Glen this past fall. He began school knowing very little English and has improved and learned so much in such a short amount of time. He's a hard worker and perseveres with a good attitude, especially when things are difficult. We are inspired by his constant willingness to try new things. He's a great classmate, friend, and problem solver who is deserving of a School Excellence Award. Next, we present fifth grader Karen Mariano. Karen is an excellent student by demonstrating good character and academic excellence in all subjects. She's responsible, hardworking, dedicated, and encourages others to perform at their best. She completes work and demonstrates knowledge in a professional yet creative way. She loves to read, and her interest in books has influenced her peers to read biographies on historical figures. She's a model student and deserving of a School Excellence Award. Finally, we present fifth grader Juan Garcia Flores. Juan is a dedicated student and eager to learn, coming to class each day with a positive attitude and a love for learning. He consistently puts forth his best effort in all academics and has improved leaps and bounds this year in reading. He's extremely goal-oriented, ambitious, hardworking, and works through challenging tasks by asking questions. Juan is a leader, a great role model to all, and deserving of a Student Excellence Award. Congratulations to our students on their achievements and excellence. We're so proud of you.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much for bringing your wonderful, outstanding students to us tonight so we could honor them. Parents are the key. Your support means everything to them and to us. So now we're going to take a short break so you can go home and get everyone tucked into bed if the homework is done. Because that's why they're such excellent students, isn't it? So we'll take a five-minute break.
Superintendent in line. Superintendent, it's all over the place.
Calling Dr. Abara back.
Dr. Abara, we gotta move on here.
Okay, I heard the gavel.
Moving on.
Don't mess with Ja. Ja moves it along.
I'm starting to feel my oats, right? Okay, so he did that. So, this part of the meeting is for public comments. In this part of the meeting, yeah. And I'll begin with Kimberly Muse.
Good evening. My name is Kim Muse, a resident of Escondido and reading intervention teacher. I am here on behalf of the lowest-achieving 20% of students I support. Reading intervention has always been an integral part of student learning in our district. The service that the interventionists provide for our students is much more than targeted instruction focused on individual learning needs. Most importantly, it gives these students a safe space among their peers who are at the same skill level to take learning risks that they are often fearful of taking in a larger class setting. EUSD has invested countless hours and funds into training teachers to become literacy specialists. Intervention teachers are highly trained to collect and analyze data, help identify students that may need special education services, and at our site are part of the CSAT team. If we take intervention away, I am fearful that these students that are thriving with extra support and are making growth will take a tremendous backside. They will lose their joy for learning and get lost in larger class sizes. I have had the privilege of working with students who are invested in their learning now and came in with no speech whatsoever, scared to talk, scared to take chances, and now back in the whole group setting and are thriving and excited to come in, and they come in and say, "I can't wait to learn, and I can actually read." And to see that growth, I just would hate to see that carpet just ripped out from underneath them. I don't think it's time yet. I think that we've seen such progress, and we've invested so much in this program, that we just gotta give it another shot. Like, it would be a disservice. So I hope that, on your discussion on the 25th, that you can find a way to keep it. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Audrey Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. Not as tall as Kim. Thank you. A little bit about myself for those of you who don't know me or know me well yet. I've been teaching, this is my 28th year. I have been a cooperating or master teacher to 27 student teachers over the years, and 26 of them remain employed, all in public schools. So I take that as my best award so far. I've served as a data TOSA, a behavior TOSA. I've taught every grade K through 5 and ESL to adults. And I love teaching, and I love learning, and I have the utmost respect for the reading intervention teachers, and that's what I'm here to speak about tonight as well. I hope that my words will assist you in being responsive to the values, beliefs, and priorities of our community. After I read your last budget study session slideshow, I was excited and happy to see that reading intervention was the number-one need amongst the survey respondents of staff and the number-two need from the community members who took the time to respond to that survey, right behind career readiness. So when I scrolled down, I was really shocked to see that reading intervention was basically annihilated from next year's budget. So I hope you will respect the integrity of the staff and the community members who took the time to fill out your surveys, and at your next study session, please find a way to fund continued reading intervention for all the sites that have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Stawicki.
Good evening, Mrs. Gardner, and board members, Dr. Abara, and Cabinet. My name is Kelly Stawicki, and I have been a proud EUSD teacher for 23 years. I represent our intervention students who will be left behind with all interventions excluded from the 24-25 budget. Research from Leslie University in Cambridge, Massachusetts tells us that reading interventionists work with specific children who have been identified as needing more literacy support than can be provided by the classroom teacher. They design interventions tailored to each child's need. One-to-one instruction is extremely beneficial for students who may feel lost in whole group settings. This year, based on our iReady diagnostic 1 and 2 progress to date, I would ask you to consider the following data. Students in reading intervention who were two or three grade levels below grade level decreased by approximately 55%. These students have begun reading recovery and are on the path to reading success. Students in reading intervention who were one grade level decreased by approximately 50%. These students are being exited from intervention and resuming mainstream classroom reading success. This year so far, 33% of our initial intervention students have been exited. Of that 33%, through our CSAT and MTSS process, only 1% of our students were identified as special education. If Tier 2 interventions are gone, it is relatively certain that our special education testing will see an uptick, as parents will seek to find other solutions for their struggling students. Our special education teams are currently heavily impacted, and meeting IEP minutes and student needs is already a challenge. So I would ask, are we saving money on salaries for intervention teachers if we must turn around and hire more special education teachers to accommodate the influx of new students to their programs? Are the students who are being referred to special education truly special education students, or are they Tier 2 students who need more support than can be offered in the mainstream classrooms? Finally, at the last board meeting, my colleague from LR Green presented a viable solution to support our five non-Titel 1 schools, including LR Green, North Broadway, Miller, Bernardo, and Reedy Creek, who will have no intervention support. So we ask our EUSD Board and Cabinet to consider the following proposal. Rather than spending $1.9 million on minimizing the number of combo classes in the primary grades of 13 schools, reduce that number by enabling five of those schools to build K-1 combos and add paraprofessionals to support them. Continuing Tier 2 intervention is critical to our MTSS process. Without this component, there will be nothing standing between general education and special education for supporting our students. I know that these decisions are difficult, and I am certain that our district will traverse this budget deficit, but we must find a solution that includes all of us, because at EUSD, it takes all of us. Thank you.
Yeah, that was pretty loud. I'll get your attention. Sonia De La Rosa.
Good evening to everybody here and to those of you who are via Zoom virtually. My name is Sonia De La Rosa, and I am a family liaison at Limitless Learning Academy. I am also a resident here of Escondido. My children have attended school here in the Escondido School District. The reason I am here today primarily is because, as many of us tonight who spoke are mentioning the budget cuts. The last time we discussed it and it was brought up, it was very concerning to see the numbers and the fact that we were losing intervention teachers, counselors, and just teachers in general as well. The impact and the budget cuts on our school is huge. It becomes clear that the loss of three teachers, including a reading intervention teacher and our school counselor, will have far-reaching consequences. These educators are not just individuals filling positions. They are pillars of our school community, shaping the academic, emotional, and social landscape of our schools and our students. The absence of our one and only counselor means that our students, many of whom are neurodivergent learners, are struggling with social anxieties. We'll no longer have the constant emotional support and guidance that they rely on. This lack of access to one-on-one check-ins and counseling services can disrupt their emotional well-being and hinder their academic progress, particularly in the online synchronous learning environment that many of them have now thrived in. Our counselor has helped students reengage. Our school, LLA, has become an intervention school for EUSD. We get many students who, for some reason or another, the regular in-person traditional school is not working for them. And now, we are told we are losing the intervention teacher, our counselor, three teachers. That's a huge impact on us. With the loss of all of this, we are now seeing less individualized attention. We are having teachers who are now going to have bigger classroom sizes. They are going to have more combo classes. We are going to lose the fundamental relationship that our community and our school has been able to establish, where they feel secure, where they feel heard. And because of the smaller classroom sizes that we've had, these students have been able, again, to reengage and have been able to come back, so many of them have not even been coming to school. So that is another thing to consider. Furthermore, the workload and the caseload for our one social worker will now become even larger. They will risk burnout. It will compromise their effective ability to meet every single student's needs. Our school is K through 8, and I would like for you guys just to consider, once again, bringing back our counselor and intervention teacher. This was going to be the end, but I do need just a few more seconds to address one more thing that has come up today at our school site. Not only are we losing all of this, but now our wonderful principal, Michael Reichel, he is amazing, our staff loves him, and our parents, is being asked to be a principal at two sites, furthering the support for Limitless Learning Academy. So please reconsider, again, giving us back our counselor, intervention teacher, and another teacher or two. Thank you.
And last, Monique Grauer.
Hello. My name is Monique Grauer, and I am the reading interventionist at North Broadway. I have had the privilege of working in this district for the last 24 years, and I am also a proud product of this district, as I attended Oak Hill, Hidden Valley, and Orange Glen High. I am here tonight to speak with you about your current proposal to terminate intervention. As you may or may not know, intervention will get to stay for 17 schools in this district, because those schools will use their Title 1 funds to maintain the program. For the five non-Titel 1 schools, Bernardo, LR Green, Miller, Reedy Creek, and my school, North Broadway, intervention will end. I am begging you to rethink this. EUSD's vision statement reads, "We will actualize the unlimited potential of every learner, every learner, not just the students who attend Title 1 schools." It also reads, "Equity is achieved when all students receive the resources and support they need to be successful." How is this equitable in our community? How can you justify that only certain children in Escondido will get the support they need to become successful readers? EUSD has equipped me with specific tools, training, and tons of material to do my job. You have invested a lot of money in these things. Please don't let these resources go to waste for our most needy and vulnerable students. Statistically, California has the lowest literacy rate in the country. Only four out of 10 students can read at grade level. These numbers are not only frightening, but downright depressing. I currently serve as 60 students performing in the lowest 20th percentile in reading. These students often read one to three years below grade level and desperately need help. They come to the reading room for small-group intensive reading instruction. It's 30 minutes a day in a safe space where they can read out loud without the stress and judgment of their peers, where they have access to text at their level, and where they can feel proud of their progress and accomplishments. It is a highlight of their day and mine, too. Please don't take this away from us. In the last three years at North Broadway, I have kept data, as I know many other interventionists in this district have. I am proud to share that 43 students have made significant gains in their reading and have been exited out of intervention. Those are the numbers that we should be focusing on. Besides instruction, I am also a critical part of the MTSS process at my school. I urge you, please make it a priority to stay true to our vision statement. Don't let this vision become just words with no accountability. Thank you for your time.
Okay, that concludes our public comments. Bond to public hearing.
So the first of our three public hearings this evening is about the developer fee justification study that is on the agenda. Later on, it would be an action item for the Board to vote up or down on the actual accepting of that developer fee justification study. So if anybody would like to speak to that, that's what the public hearing is for.
So the public hearing is now open, if anyone wishes to speak or address the mitigation study? I'm not seeing anyone. The public hearing is now closed.
Okay. Next public hearing. Audrey will take.
The next public hearing is to open negotiations for CSAT for the 24, for the next year.
Okay, the public hearing is now open for the Sunshine negotiation proposal for CSAT.
Good evening, President Gardner, Superintendent Abara, members of the Board, the Cabinet. CSAT did a survey of our members, and I'm proud to say that over 50% of our members did the survey, and this is what they're telling us to propose, and the negotiations, that's getting ready to proceed. Article 4, Article 6, Article 8, Article 9, Article 10, and that is, and then Article 15. So we look forward to productive negotiations and continuing collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beebe. The public hearing, anyone else wishing to speak to that item? Okay, then the public hearing is now closed.
The next public hearing is open negotiations with RAA.
The public hearing is now open.
President Gardner, members of the Board, Dr. Abara, and Cabinet, good evening. Thank you for providing me with this time. I speak for the Escondido Elementary Educators Association and our bargaining team. When I move to Sunshine, the following collective bargaining agreement articles. Article 10, which is work hours, work year. Article 11, leaves. Article 13, transfer. Article 14, evaluation. Article 15, safety. Article 16, benefits. Article 17, salaries. Article 18, early retirement. And lastly, Article 22, which is par. Shout out to Trace and Reedy for proposing some possible bargaining dates already, which we've accepted. And last, I'd like to say the association and our team are looking forward to a productive spring bargaining session. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. The public hearing is now closed. Next item is a report from the California School Employees Association.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have anything written today. I don't have anything eloquent to say, other than we're looking forward to negotiating with you, CSAT, and all of you have had such a great start to the year, and I just hope that that continues as we start discussing some hot topics. So I thank you so much for your open communication and for just always being so willing to listen to us. Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you, New Emy. And the next is a report from the Escondido Elementary Educators Association.
Hi there, Board. Superintendent Dr. Abara, and thank you, Brandy, for allowing me a chance to speak to some concerns throughout the community. I am coming to speak to you about the lack of communication in regards to community schools. Some community members and staff have been made aware of the community schools grant that is being offered for a substantial amount of money. While we know that that grant is not going to be approved until possibly early May, and we may or may not get that grant, why have we not seen a presentation here to allow all of our community members the chance or opportunity to be made aware of this substantial opportunity? Transparency. We want to know. Why haven't we? As 17 schools... As 17 schools could or would be directly affected and are fully qualified to receive said grant, if we filed early enough, we have filed quite late in the game. I know we filed on time. But once we know the results, we will have very little time to bring staff and parents and the entire community together to effectively utilize said money. It is very important that our community members understand the community schools' process and what this may look like. This is the perfect opportunity to bring our steering committee together and begin the planning process. This is a great way to collaborate with our associations and community members. Just a reminder that this is meant to bring communities together. We made great strides in communication and collaboration during COVID, and we need to regain that momentum and do what is best for kids in order to solve issues before they arise. Your AAA is supporting the grant process. We are behind the intent. However, many are still not informed of the possibility. I myself would rather be very disappointed in not receiving that grant than feel rushed or not involved in the process if we do get it. Another form of transparency from our community members, parents especially, is where to find the future dates of these said board meetings. I know them. My staff might know them if they know where to ask. So if we could, in the future, have those actually posted and visible on the board docs, there's a landing page, which is accessible on the EUSD webpage in advance, like at the very beginning of the year, so parents and community members know and can make the opportunity to attend or watch virtually to stay informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. The next item is written communications. Have they all been distributed?
Yes.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Unless there's something that someone wants to pull to discuss or vote on separately. Actually, I had a couple of comments. Not, not, I don't want to pull anything, but I wonder if you would indulge me for a moment. The first one was the Matt DiLaPena Last Stop Stories at Rincon. There's a presentation, and I was wondering if a board member could attend. I thought it would be interesting. I just don't know the time. I know it's on the 22nd of April. So if you would, thank you. And let's see. The Committee on Chronic Absenteeism that we're collaborating with the county office on. I wonder, it's a year-long process. I'd like very much that we're presented with the results at the end instead of it just, you know, going off into the netherworld after we're completed or as an inside conversation. I think it's important that we know too. That's one of our big problems is the ongoing absenteeism rate. And then I wanted to congratulate Del DIO students who were in a competition, the Mesa Competition. And they came out with first place in the local competition, and they will be on Saturday at at the regional competition. I'm trying to remember where that's going. It's El Centro. Yeah, I would have, that's a long way to go. Anyhow, I wish them good luck. And again, we're very proud of them. That's quite an accomplishment. I think it's important to recognize those accomplishments as well. And then, that was it. So now, if there's a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, please register your vote. I still don't know where to, there it is. Okay, gotcha. Great. And now we're on to, oh, whoops. Discussion and action, business services.
Good evening, Madam President, board members, cabinet, everybody in the audience, everybody watching at home. Tonight, we have an action item related to the developer fees, as I alluded to earlier during the public hearing. But I wanted to give quick, first, an opportunity. There's been several new pieces of information about our facilities program. I just wanted to give a quick update on that. So first, I'm going to start off with just available funding that we have within our facilities program. And it's not just the general obligation bond funding. So first, I'll start off with our, matching funds is more commonly what it's called, the state, the school facilities program. You can see there's almost 11 million there. What we have available currently from our Proposition E, and I'm going to go into a little bit more detail in each of these. I'm just going to summarize real quick. 21 million in our bond program. Developer fees right now in the bank, we have 6.9 million. And then, of course, our community facilities district that we have in place for a couple of different developments right now. That's the amount of money revenue's been generated from that. So first, the state funding one. This is one that we're quite proud of because of the great work that we've done in our facilities team, construction and all of that, the whole district effort. And of course, these schools that have been in session during construction projects, going back when we were remodeling Orange Glen, their kindergarten building that we built, the new building out there, as well as the new building, the first new building at Del DIOs. Those two projects, because of the being successfully completed, we applied to the state, and they'll match up to 60% of the cost. And so for those two, we've actually received the, who did have the math on the first slide? $10.8 million for that. And that money's actually already been received. Then we have our general obligation bond, the Prop E that was first passed in 2014, original authorization of 182 million. So far, from series A through D, we've actually brought in 153 million of that. Much of that's been used already. But then, just recently, in fact, as recent as this morning, we received the next series, Series E of Proposition E, for $11 million, which we had gone and done our credit rating meetings, all of those things. And then I put that in bold, we actually were able to maintain our credit rating. So our bond sold at the value that we had expected. So that's another $11 million that's going to support our bond program. Now, a lot of that's already allocated to our Mission Phase III project and a few other projects that we've discussed at previous board meetings. This here, and I've given all of you a handout. I put a few out on the counter there. Good luck reading that on the slide. This is a map of Escondido, and all the little boxes and lines represent developments that have already started the process in some fashion, at some part of the process, to getting permits from the city to start building either apartment complexes or homes. So if you were to look at that handout, any of you lucky enough to grab one in the audience, we can always produce more if need be. And those of you at home can probably open that up and just expand it. You can see that there's a lot of growth coming at us soon here in Escondido, which is an important part of the credit rating and the bond program as well because it's not necessarily just about the district. It's about the city that we're in and the opportunities for growth here. And you can see that a lot of developers are building residential space for people to move into Escondido. And so that's going to drive decision-making and things down the road as some of those start to come into play. So the action item before you, just to discuss what actually is up for vote, is a developer fee, basically an increase to our developer fees. Developer fees being the amount of money that we would collect. It's based on a square footage per square foot for new additions. So if you add square footage to your home over a certain amount, builds an additional home perhaps on your property. A lot of times, that's happening nowadays, commonly called tiny homes. But an ADU, it's Alternative Domestic Unit, not as fun as tiny home. Or tiny mansions, I've seen a show about too. It's like two or three of those together. So if you build one of those, then that obviously produces another opportunity for someone to live that might have children, that creates an impact on the schools. And that's where the justification for developer fees comes in. And of course, apartment complexes and other developments as well will be a part of that. So that as the population grows, we're also receiving some funding for that to keep up with our facilities side of things. At the bottom there, just as of the third quarter, we've collected, so the current year, just over a million dollars in developer fees. And of course, as we talked about in the first slide, right now in the bank is about 6.9 million in developer fees. Any questions so far? And of course, this being an action item on that. This is actually the results of the justification study. So you can see on the left side, there's the current developer fee rates and then the recommended rates on the right side. And then kind of did the math for you, as you like to do. It's a change of just about 19 cents per square foot for residential room additions as well. So residential stuff, commercial, 3 cent. Self-storage properties, if you wanted to build a self-storage, that developer fee recommended in this study goes down. And just so you know, that if we do a study, and we don't have to, but if we do one, the only thing we can do at that point is either adopt or not adopt the results of that, even if it makes the developer fees go down. So obviously, we're recommending that those of you out in the community that would like to build a storage facility, we would be charging you less by virtue of this action.
Storage facilities don't produce children.
Generally not, you would hope not.
Yeah, let's hope, right.
Right. A lot of times, people use those when they move out of a community. So that probably is why that makes sense. And of course, the justification study is attached to the board item. So anybody that wants to look further into the why behind some of those things. Is there any questions on this before we get to the actual action item? Okay. Questions? All right. Thank you.
So then this is an action item. There needs to be a a motion?
Make a motion to approve as recommended. Second.
All in favor? Any knows?
Not yet.
No.
Passes 4-0.
Okay, passes 4-0. And our educational services, the comprehensive Safe School Plans? They've been two, we were presented with two prototypes in our update. So any comments or is there a motion? I'll move, approval? Okay. All those in favor, please vote. We have a recommendation for a student expulsion?
All right. Regarding item number 202324-17, move approval of the expulsion to be immediately suspended with immediate placement at Limitless Learning Academy through the end of this year. Expulsion through the end of this school year, suspended with placement at Limitless Academy immediately.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please vote. Passes 4-0. Human Resources Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2425 school year?
I'm, we're seeking approval for a declaration of need for qualified educators for the 2425 school year to approve out-of-state and other new teachers to our district who need to be on limited assignments or clad emergency permits.
Motion to approve staff recommendation. Second.
Please vote. Next item is to approve the initial negotiation proposal and procedure for negotiations between the district and the Escondido Elementary Educators Association for the 2425 fiscal year.
We're seeking approval to open the articles listed that are requested as well as adding multi-trip.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Please vote. Next item is to approve the initial negotiation proposal and procedure for negotiations between the district and the California School Employees Association for the 2425 fiscal year.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Please vote. And we've all received copies, no, have we received copies of the? Okay, the governance, the revised governance handbook? Is there a motion to approve the revised handbook?
Move to approve the revised handbook.
I'll second.
Please vote. Moving right along. We're down to board members' reports. Mr. Olson?
No report this evening, thank you.
I'll be happy to take his time. I attended the Smart Festival at the California Center for the Arts. It was always impressive to see all the students' artwork and projects they work on. And then I think we're going to have to move it to the big theater next year because they had performances in the little theater, and it was packed. It was standing room only, out the doors. It was fantastic. So it was great to see such a good turnout and see all the schools participating and all the effort that went into that. So that, it was fantastic. I also attended the insurance committee meeting, which was not fun, but we're getting through it. And I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Rock Springs for the Neighborhood Health Dental, Mobile Dental Unit. I think that's what they call it. Great setup. They've already had, they've already seen 750 students for, absolutely free to the students. And they've had over 1,200 dental appointments with those students. So I know they're hoping to expand, but it was a really nice setup. And I appreciate partnering with Neighborhood Health on that. I also attended the San Diego Legion Rugby Game, the opening thing at Snapdragon, which is always fun, and the leapfrog skydive dove in at halftime. It was, it was really fun, but it was great seeing all the staff and the students that were attending and the families. It was a great, it's always a great venue and to see students, you know, what they can work towards. And still not a rugby fan though, but we'll get there. We will get there. And then this morning, I attended the District Advisory Council Meeting where we talked about family engagement policies and what the district is doing and what the school sites are doing. And it's always a great collaboration time for the schools that do attend. So I would encourage all the schools to send a representative so we could have a more robust meeting and more ideas being shared. That is my report.
Well, I am a rugby fan, and I was able to go to the tournament that we had at Rincon Middle School a couple of weeks ago. Absolutely fantastic, the community. The community energy surrounding this is fantastic. And speaking of energy, we had a great design team meeting, saw some of the, um, the pitches for the school redesigns yesterday and just very excited with where the schools are going.
Okay. So, when you're last in the line, there's not much left to report, but yeah, um, the insurance committee and we're working on it. And I think we're, we've started early enough. We're gonna be getting some good information and giving some good input as a team. I really appreciate that. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the last DELAC, District English Language Advisory Committee Meeting, and I always enjoy those meetings so much. The parents are so engaged and so involved and it's really appreciated. And those are the ones whose children will be successful. I think, as I always say, it's the parents who are the key to their children's success. And the more, more they give their, their attention and caring, the better their children will do. So, anyhow, they had a survey on, and I don't know how we're gonna do this because we're talking budget and we're talking about consolidating and minimizing because there are problems ahead in, as far as budget goes. But, um, we asked the parents what we're doing well and what they would like to see. And something that came up, is something we used to have years ago, was English as a second language for the parents. And I think it, that was really beneficial and I think that would be really helpful. At the time, it was the, the high school district, adult education that provided those services. Could we can, have a communication with them again? And see, I know they're constrained now too, with their budgets, but they do still have an adult school. And this would be an important part for the community.
Joan, that came up in our meeting today as well. They want, they wanted the same thing.
Oh, good.
So, they were, yeah. They asked the adult school, we'll see.
Yeah.
Seems like it faded away after COVID.
Well, it, it ended because of COVID, obviously.
Right.
But I think it's time to remind them what, what is important in our community. They also talked about a math club after school for their, for their children. They're really interested in their, their children's success in education and so, we need to encourage that. And my mind is always to the basics. By the way, when we were talking about reading and how important it is and the intervention, there's a bill, and I don't know if that died or it's still pending. I think it's 2222, 2222, which will require the teaching of phonics. I don't know if, if you're familiar with that at all? I came across it.
It's still, it's still in play.
Okay.
It's still in play. I don't think it's formally been adopted. There's
And I thought finally. Somebody heard me. Anyhow, I look forward to if we can keep track of that and, and if there's a chance for us to weigh in on the importance of, of it, because we're having success.
I think cursive writing was also
That one I didn't see.
There is one, uh, cursive writing has
Yeah. I think even more important is the phonics, to tell you the truth. I mean, cursive writing is important as well. To put what in? Phonics?
Cursive.
Oh, cursive. I don't know, somehow Years ago, there was no problem fitting it in. And actually, they sent us home with worksheets to practice our penmanship. So, just a thought. And also the design team. I was very impressed with some of the presentations. They gave us their five-year plans, their prototypes, what their plans are, and I wish them all success. There was a lot of enthusiasm in the room and I look forward, I know it's going to take time and we, we need to be careful not to get discouraged. And I always look back at Conway and at how, how long it took, but the success that they're having now. So, I look forward to the same in our reinvention of our schools. And we'll see. That might be the encouragement for more schools for the next round of, to, to get on board as well. But meanwhile, I hope they're brainstorming about what they need to be doing to increase our learning. Just don't forget about the basics.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that's my, my point. I mean, there's a lot of excitement about making school fun, but make, we have to remember what the job of a school is and that's to teach our children. And to teach them to be literate and to teach them to be able to do math, but I also liked the, the financial literacy part that was part of some of the presentations. Anyhow, that's my report. Moving on. Oh, Doug, Dr. Ibarra.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to, again, announce, I put it in Happy Friday last week, but congratulate Patty, Patty Anderson, teacher at Rincon, Rincon Middle School, as our Middle School Teacher of the Year. We also have Rosio Hernandez, Pioneer Teacher, Elementary Teacher of the Year. And we have our Classified Employee of the Year, Jonesy, our locksmith with M and O. We look forward to honoring them at our, honoring our own event, Garden Reception, which is coming up soon. And that's all I have.
Cabinet?
So, we did wanna take a moment to share and highlight. Uh, we went ahead and tried to capture some of the excitement around esports. And so, there's a little bit of a video that we just were able to see, so we wanted to share that with you.
We are here at Hidden Valley Middle School at our very first esports championship and we are just super excited to be able to welcome students from all of our middle schools. Who have been practicing and training for this day. We just recently launched esports in our district and just have had a tremendous response from our students, from our families, from our community.
When I'm playing with other people, I can talk, laugh, and have fun while I'm playing and it's just an overall great experience.
I was really excited when I heard about it because it was hosted by my favorite teacher there and I love video games. So, it was like, I always wanted this to happen.
We were able to really do some research and find a platform that not only offers them access to playing and competing in these video games, but also in learning about the different careers that are involved and that are part of the industry.
It's game day, it's tournament day. So, there's a lot of excitement. Some kids are logging into Academy to raise their live score. Their live scores are basically points that get them into the district championship at the end of the season.
It just like helps kids engage in gaming. It helps them learn about new stuff that they've never learned before.
You learn about like the engineering and like, I guess, what's it called? The computer science.
And the game artistry.
Yeah, the artistry. My goal is to help make a FIFA or a video game after I finish school.
I work at Amazon Game Studio right now. Um, I'm a senior publishing producer. I feel like kids nowadays having access to game design or game design careers or understanding what could be is so valuable. It's getting them a jumpstart on what I wish I had when I first started.
We are blown away by how our district's supported with this esports room. It's incredible. I wish I had something like this when I grew up in middle school or high school. The purpose is to get kids to wanna come to school. And, and really, just having it here, uh, I think is getting kids really interested to be invested in part of our campus culture.
I absolutely love watching them. Um, I love their excitement. I love the teamwork. I love the competitiveness. It's teaching them good sportsmanship. It's teaching them about career paths in esports and it just gives them a safe space to be outside of school as well.
It's exciting to see it all come together today where they're able to finally kind of be in this setting and you just see the excitement in their eyes.
All right. And then, the next championship for spring will be at Bear Valley and May 16th. Yes. And also, we have our STEM Challenge Day actually is also tomorrow at Rincon. Saturday, sorry. Yeah, Saturday at 8:30 over at Rincon.
Can I ask a question? Have we pushed that out on any of our, our media platforms or communication platforms? That's a great video and I think, perfect. I think if there's not plans, I hope we can because that's fantastic. Kudos to everyone that was involved in the production of that. It's a well-made video and I think it will do wonders to show what we're doing here in the district.
I just wanna add one thing. Full credit, those are our spaces and I just wanna thank the maintenance and operations teams, they built those spaces.
Then to field with the sound. The next meeting will be a board study session on Thursday, April 25th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. And our next scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, May 9th, 2024 at 7:00 PM at the Escondido Union School District, 2310 Aldagro Avenue. And having no further business, we are now adjourned.